Okay, it's August 10th, 2020. I'm going to call this meeting to order a roll call. Smiley.
Here.
Panel.
Here.
McMurphy here. Number four, approval of warrants and claims.
I move to do so.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five. Approval of the minutes of last meeting, July 27th, 2020.
We'll move.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Number six. Discussion of possible action regarding the following road crossing permits for OGN E and AEC.
And it looks like they're both in District 3.
Let me find them. It's locked on, uh, one of these, and crossing 280. That's over there by Lester's, isn't it? 280?
Yeah. Kind of odd that they're both down there. I mean, both companies doing the same thing.
Same ones above.
But I didn't know they were red.
They're overheads, so crossing Ellis Road.
Maybe they have to move them or something.
Well, that's right at the district line. That's at the...
Northwest, Section 33, 26 north, 15 west. Crossing Ellis Road.
And Ellis Road to Blacktop?
That's Grant. Freedom Cut Off?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's Grant Road, isn't it?
Okay, so Ellis is a mile more.
Ellis is a mile south of, uh...
Oh, south.
A mile north of Craig.
Okay, so it's down there south.
Ellis is, uh, Aguard.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Aguard, Blacktop is Ellis.
Is Ellis Road, is there an Ellis Road back in there at 280? South of Lester's?
Lester's is in Garvin, so it'd be a mile south of Lester's.
Okay.
But 280, yeah, there's a, there's an Ellis between 280 and, um...
Can you go west there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, well...
It doesn't matter, I mean, it's in your district.
Yeah.
But if they're overhead, like, you good with them?
Yeah, I'm good with them. I'll make that motion.
All right.
Because they're a mile south of Lester's and back to the east.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's, who's, who's doing Alphallos Electric?
And OGV. Was there two of them?
Yeah.
I mean, that's why it was odd to me.
They're both in the same area, no?
I knew they crisscrossed.
I know, I know on, um, right there, like, Rose Valley.
Yeah.
This side of the road is OGN E and that side of the road is Alphallos Electric.
Yeah.
And they go about half a mile. One goes this way and the other comes from the other way. So there's a little of both. Right in there, north. I don't know how far OGN E goes out to the west and stuff. Are they covered freedom? OGN E or Alphallos?
That's AEC.
That's all Alphallos Electric got in there, I think, but... I don't know.
That transmission line in right there, is it?
No.
North, is it?
It's south. It's south. It goes to down there by...
Oh, yeah.
Clarkson. On east and south. Okay, number seven. Approved, disapproved monthly reports for the following assessors, county clerk, court clerk, health department, treasurer, election board, and sheriff.
And the sheriff's is not...
I, look, I'll make the motion and we accept all elements here other than the sheriff.
All right. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Warrant bill again.
Where you going with that?
Hunter and Roll Car.
That's pretty fine, wasn't it? You sure?
That's what my wife told me when I looked up.
What about when you left?
She was mumbling something, but I hurried up, shut the door. Probably wasn't what she said to first, though. I'll cut you off there.
Are you moving down?
Yeah, I miss her.
I am.
She ain't there, my wife ain't there.
Yeah.
It was stuck to there, didn't it?
Yeah.
Well, this is always where it hurts, though.
We don't like?
Well, I'm just an actual... Feeling nice when I'm left.
If we had discussion of possible action, if we approved those, those two, do we?
Well, you have to sign that notice, so I just...
Okay, well, I didn't care, but I mean, did already, aren't we approving the two the same thing as we're going to approve in, or 11?
But the 11 is the notice that we will give to the election board.
Okay, probably. Okay, all right.
First one's the resolution, second one's the order, and then the third one is the proclamation.
All right. Number eight. Discussion of possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
We got some?
Yeah.
We can check?
Looks like 85. About 86.
We accept those? Is that about what we was at?
Eighty-five, no, that's down about 10. But our CBRI, our 105 account, is about half. It's, looks like it's at five.
They dropped M and O and then they kind of give us a little bit extra on the CBRI?
No, the CBRI, they're taking away.
Or the, uh...
But that's two different things.
Yeah.
Sir, CIRB is where they're adding and...
They're equalizing, don't they?
No.
It hasn't come in the CIRB?
No, no. It, it doesn't show on here, anyway.
But they do have a line for that now on the report?
No, no, we just, we get the appropriations for that 105 count, which has been around a close to 10,000 and it's down to the five, something, 50, 200 this time. That's as low as it, it got that low back there a year ago, or...
Yeah.
Or it, I don't know how long it's been, but... Have I got a motion to approve this one?
I made the motion.
Okay. And John seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I've never missed that. Didn't tell us?
Who's checking you?
Uh-huh.
Isn't it for a while back, when her knee, her accident, she said, "Give me your debit card." I was like, "Thank everybody, my insurance card." She didn't even pay attention.
Oh.
She loved her ass.
I bet she wasn't. She was calling, you weren't.
She was making you look like a fool in there. I said, "I handed it right to you, just like your car went off."
Yeah, yeah, and, um... I was hoping my brother and mother on the wall to get our place fixed up, because...
Here in town or something?
Yeah, because the buyers have been along in our house. Down there, but we're ready up here.
Okay. I don't know if I'm in for all this, but we want to...
Clear up.
Yeah. Number nine. Discussion of possible action regarding the resolution number 202117 and proposition for the ballot question. A resolution to establish an emergency medical service district composed of all Woods County for the purpose of providing ambulance service to all county residents to levy a special annual reoccurring ad, the law, tax of three mils on the dollar of assessed valuation until lawfully repealed in addition to all other levies upon the assessed valuation of all taxable property in Woods County, Oklahoma, real and personal, under the authority of Article 10, Section 9C of the Oklahoma Constitution, effective in the 2021 tax year thereafter, with the proceeds of such tax levy to be allocated among the existing ambulance service providers furnishing ambulance service in Woods County and other successors, as assessed and levied each tax year within each service area located within Woods County and paid to the existing ambulance providers of their successor principally located and/or serving the majority of the residents within, within such service area, requiring approval of such tax by majority of the registered voters voting in an election held for such purposes, purpose as provided by law. Okay.
So move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, you got to do it again? Two hundred degrees.
Well, we got to sign this one. We have to approve this one, then we'll, I don't know if it reads, it appears to be the same, huh?
It's, it does, but it's a little bit, right? The start.
Yeah. And number 10. Discussion of possible action regarding an order authorizing the calling and holding of an election in Woods County, State of Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of said county the questions of approval or disapproval by said voters of a resolution to establish an emergency medical service district composed of all Woods County for the purpose of providing ambulance service to all county residents with a special annual reoccurring ad, the law, and tax of three mil on the dollar of assessed valuation being levied upon until lawful repeal. In addition to all other levies upon the assessed valuation of all taxable property in Woods County, Oklahoma, real and personal, under the authority of Article 10, Section 9C of the Oklahoma Constitution, effective in the 2021 tax year thereafter, for the term of such tax, provided that all revenues derived therefrom be used for the support, organization, operation, maintenance, and all lawful purposes of an emergency medical service district and its purpose of providing ambulance services and emergency medical first responder service to all county residents, and further providing that the proposition shall require approval by a majority of the registered voters voting in an election held for said purposes as provided by law.
I'll move to do so.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carried also. We got to sign off on it. Okay, number 11. Discussion of possible action regarding the election proclamation and notice for the ballot question noted in Agenda Item 9 and Item 10.
Make the motion and then we push that on to the election board. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm pretty certain their intent, just to add to that, is for the November election, right?
Yeah.
Presidential election.
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Changes. And the actual, I guess that's what's going on the ballot is what's on this, right? I moved the back page and the front goes, and the actual what's going to be on the ballot is on the front page. Okay, number 12. Discussion of possible action regarding the CD number eight, engineering selection.
This is the new board we have to start doing, uh, for ODOT and David DeWorme on there. You have JP and Free Ward, 2778, is that what you mentioned?
31778.
Okay, down for Bridge 21, District 1, that's the one around the port bay in front of the salt port, really, really. And that will be, we went back and looked, and there's several more things done for next week's meeting in all of Illinois. One for each district or something.
What is it, just changing the job description?
No, the job description's there, it's just to start the engineering, they have thought instead of me holding the gun to your head and make, let me do all the work, but they want verification from the county that you're selecting us as the designer. And then we're having to do the same thing that comes up for a construction ad.
Basically just clarifying.
Just clarifying, yeah. It's basically stuff to come out of the audit for, that we've done at CD7.
Being counter, another way of checking.
Well, this is double checking, make sure that the county knows we're designing the project.
Okay, David, that's your project you give.
Yeah. I'll make the motion, we do that?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion here.
Charlie, did she say we updated the corners, remember?
Oh, let me look. Let's do this one.
You ready, John?
Yep.
Discussion of possible action regarding bridge inspection and voice number 676252 and reported conference panel in Woods County and CDA.
As for 11 bridges in, uh, in your county, District 1 had six bridges, District 2 had four, District 1 had one.
You mean that one?
You had one. And I got there when you did the next, doing that report conference, I got your result. You got them both on the same line, Joe?
Okay.
David, of yours six, uh... See, three of them need repairs, three of them need bridge end markers, and two of them need, uh, channel clean and reshape and some rip rack.
Quit inspecting them.
Do I?
Quit inspecting.
Well, you need something to do. District 2, of your four, Randy, you, two of your four need, uh, channel clean and reshape and rip rack. The job, I think yours is a fairly new one on the Craig Road on the west side, and it does not move in the back.
Aren't there the highway?
Yes.
Okay, and this is, the ODOT's going to pay this, right?
Yeah, ODOT pays those, and what's the, 80% federal, 40% state.
Okay. I make the motion, we approve.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
All right. Every time the water gets over the bridge, do you guys go check it out, or?
No.
You know, like Lake Creek the other day was, uh, it was out of water. Well, I mean, what, a week ago?
Yeah.
I mean, not that... They're both seconded. They're all running there now. Got a picture of it.
Yeah, unless you, unless you make those problems.
No, I...
You shouldn't be there. Before they get up to you on it?
It ran over the bridge deck, you know how it's got the side rails, you have a little claw that's cut in?
The holes, yeah.
It runs through the holes. It was probably that deep on the, on the bridge.
Well, it did where it's supposed to, so it didn't go to the house, and, uh...
No, no, it looked like it may be two, two more feet before it got into the house. You know, it would be over the bridge rails as it got into that house, yeah, before it got into that house. Okay. Number 14. Discussion of possible action regarding the transfer of funds, $6,304.26 was deposited in the general fund instead of the E911 fund. Just saying. In there, I'll make the motion, we approve that transfer.
I'll second.
Things straightened out. All in favor?
Aye.
You aye?
Yep, aye. You aye, me. And number 15 is just the opposite, discussion of possible action regarding the transfer of funds appropriated, $21,240.48 into the E911 fund instead of the general fund. So, what? What you give it, you take it away, only more.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It looks like they're names.
I'm just kind of mumbling.
I would too.
There's that river up past. Okay, number 16. Discussion of possible action regarding the requisitioning and, uh, regarding the requisitioning and receiving officer for the Woods County Health Department requisitioning Patty Stillman and his brother, Miranda Mata-Ruz.
Yeah.
And receiving Dawn McMurtry and Lashan Villa.
That was beautiful. I move to do so. They, they changed it to help or something and just need new people, or?
Yeah, they switched people around.
You make the motion?
Yes, sir. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you get your roundup in the vet supplier ending?
Uh, I have, yes.
GSP roundup?
Do I? Do you get rounded up there, is that what you're going to do?
Yes, yes.
Oh, there's two, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Number 17. Discussion of possible action regarding the annual renewal memo of agreement with One Media Incorporated in the amount of $1,200 per general, which that's for our dispatch, our premier, and $1,200 for District 1.
That's mine.
And that's yours, and that was because they weren't on the annual.
Right.
They were just a partial, and they get on the annual contract.
I'll move to approve that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And number 18. Discussion of possible action regarding the annual renewal memo, three minutes with blue sky, in the amount of $300. And that's the same thing, I mean, out there, the same.
For a tower.
Yeah.
I'll move to resent that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 19, discussion of possible action regarding Dell laptop to surplus and jump, ID number D 250021 for District 3.
It's, uh, just an old laptop that won't do Zoom or any of that stuff anymore, so I had to get a new one. I asked Shelley if she would talk to Grant, whether they could maybe donate it to some kid that needs to, uh, I hate to just throw it away, if it's still usable, if some kid could use it, uh, for schoolwork or something. I mean, or something like that, I, I didn't know what to really do with it, other than just throw it away.
Okay, so that's what you did?
Well, I haven't yet, I'm asking you guys what I need to do with it.
That'd probably be anything to do, don't mean a clean, it's...
Yeah.
Well, that, you know, it's got material on it, it might be sensitive, or...
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, I'm asking you. I'll, I'll trash it then.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you do business while you're signing that stuff?
I don't have any. That's good news, sometimes you don't...
Granted, yeah. Maybe it's over.
Seemed to be...
One's over, one about to start.
Okay, I'll move on to 21, approve, disapprove blanket purchase order.
I move, we approve those.
I'll second, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, number 22, and motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Here it is.